What's that kind of job you got?
You've done your new home, haven't you?
My hands. Nope. It's not until you're there for the ribbon.
Hey, how are you?
Between you and I, are you happy with the office room?
No.
I'm asking you if you're happy in the office room.
Yeah, I'm happy.
And mine is.
Didn't miss one, come on. Yes, here sometime.
And on the office. Oh, yeah. Well, he's better than the office. Everybody has them put to use. When I try to kind of go on.
Okay, the meeting will please come to order. This is a duly advertised meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of a city ordinance. Matters of this type, the decision of this board is final. In respect, it does not go to the mayor or city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you do have recourse in a court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. Matters of this type, we act as an advisory committee to the mayor and city council, making a recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. Secretary, pull the board, please.
Ms. Safer?
Here.
Mr. Lusio?
Here.
Mr. McCauley?
Here.
Mr. Nocktree?
Here.
Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
Here.
Mr. Chair, the third item on your agenda here is approval of the January 16th, 2020 zoning board appeals minutes.
Motion be in order.
So move.
Second.
The motion second approved minutes. Pull the board.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Nocktree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
Mr. Lusio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
The next item, item four on the agenda, citizens to be heard on agenda items, and this is a section for anyone wanting to speak regarding items that are listed on the agenda, except for those items that are listed as a public hearing. In this case today, everything on the agenda, I believe, is a public hearing. So we will move forward. Under old business, item five, public hearing, this is petition number 201937. Are the petitioners here? Okay, so I will summarize the staff report. This is a request for a variation to allow a driveway that does not lead to a garage located at 1111 Waverly Place. The applicants in this matter are John and Susan Gill. They are also the owners of the property. They are requesting this variation to allow a driveway that does not lead to a garage in order to build a 12-foot-wide paved driveway in the front yard in an R2 single-family residence district. The property in question is 5,125 square feet. It contains a 988-square-foot one-story house, which was built in 1955. And the property also contains a 308-square-foot one-car detached garage. The current lot coverage is 25.29%, and that complies with the maximum 30% lot coverage requirement. Again, the property is zoned R2, single-family residential district. And this petition was filed originally on October 16th of 2019. The zoning board of appeals did held a public hearing on this petition on November 21st of 2019. There was a motion to approve the petition, but that failed on a three-to-two vote. Per section 47-19.4, vote requirements of the zoning ordinance, the motion failed for lack of four favorable votes. So the petitioners subsequently requested an appeal of the decision, and the city council considered this matter at its regular meeting on January 7th, 2020. By unanimous vote, the council voted to remove the item from the agenda and send the petition back to the zoning board of appeals for reconsideration. Surrounding zoning, land use, and character are R2, single-family residential district in all directions. Applicable regulations are as noted in the staff report. Under discussion, again, the petitioner is intending or seeking to construct a 12-by-35-foot paved driveway in the front yard of the house located at 1111 Waverly. The house also has a 308-square-foot one-car detached garage with a 13-foot-long driveway apron off of the alley. Per the zoning ordinance, all garages and carports are required to include and maintain a paved driveway and parking area, which is improved with concrete, batuminous concrete, or paving bricks. And driveways may only be constructed in a side yard or that part of a front yard leading directly to an attached garage, and must maintain a two-and-a-half-foot setback from the property lines unless approved by the city manager or designee. In order to construct the proposed driveway in the front yard, the petitioner seeks a variation from the zoning board of appeals as the city manager and/or his designee and community development director defers to the zoning board of appeals with respect to making a decision on this request. Staff has concerns that the addition of a parking space and removal of the lawn in the front yard will alter the character of the property and the block, given the prevalence of relatively narrow lots in the neighborhood. However, the house is located at 1106, 1108, and 1119 Waverly Place on this same block. Also have driveways located in the front yard. Staff has researched past zoning records for those properties and found no evidence that variations were received from the zoning board of appeals. Also, staff found no evidence that building permits were obtained for those driveways. Staff found one record of a building permit for a driveway project located at 1106 Waverly Place, but was unable to determine if that permit included the portion of the driveway that is presently located in front of the house. If the zoning board desires to approve this petition to allow the driveway that does not lead to a garage, there is one condition that would be included, and that is that a building permit should be, shall be obtained prior to construction. That concludes staff's report.
Yeah, I have a question, clarification. This went to the city council. They sent it back here. I thought we were the final vote on this. Is that why they sent it back?
I believe so. We spoke with our legal department, directed that it actually be placed on the city council agenda. And then when it did occur on that agenda, there was no discussion on it, and they just remained.
It's not bad.
They removed it from the agenda.
So are we the final decision?
I believe so.
That's what my impression was.
That's a legal question.
We were the final decision on this.
That would be a legal question.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner here?
Yes. So the night that we went to city council, they, we were told.
I swear you in, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
I swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law.
Yes.
I need your names and addresses.
John and Susan Gill, 1111 Waverly.
So the night that we appeared before the city council, they asked us why we were appearing before them, and we told them because we were told when we left you guys that we were approved, that we had the votes in our favor. And then we received a call from Mike who told us it was an error because you didn't have enough people on the panel.
Majority, yeah.
It wasn't, we didn't, because, right. So the city council heard what we had to say, and they said that it would go back to you guys when you had a full panel to hear our thing again, and you should hear what we had to say.
Okay, is there anything new you want to present?
Yes.
We're familiar with this.
Yeah. Since then, I mean, besides us wanting to explain to you why, we drove around in a four-block radius. And in that four-block radius, there are a total of 93 parking up front. That also includes driveways along the sides that are blocked off by, and we have pictures if you'd like to see.
No, I've been through there. I know it.
But besides those, there are 57 that have parking in front of the house, just like what I want to put in front of mine.
My insurance premiums. My insurance premiums have gone up because my insurance companies have canceled me. I've got three cars totaled in front of my house from drivers that go down and hit my cars. I've had numerous cars damaged. They take the mirrors off. They side swipe me. They don't stick around to tell me they hit me. I'm paying a higher premium insurance. And why? Because I have nowhere to put this vehicle. I have a one-car garage. I park it in the back of my garage. They hit it in the back alley. I'm trying to secure a vehicle so I don't have to pay high premiums.
I compliment you on at least coming in and requesting the building permits and getting the proper credentials to do it. As stated by the secretary,
I mean, 1501 just put one.
Other locations in there that didn't even bother doing that and went ahead and constructed it. If we deny your petition here today, then we should go against the ones that are already installed and did it illegally.
Correctly, and that's what the city council said. The city council said, why aren't you moving out?
Is there anyone here in the audience here in opposition to this? Because most of the neighbors already have.
And my neighbors, and both my neighbors on the side of us said, good luck. We hope you get it. We don't want to see you move.
Okay. Is there any questions by the board?
I have a question for the city. What about requiring all those that don't have permits to be taken out?
It becomes an enforcement issue. So we have not received complaints on any of those. It's just the light was shed based on these applicants coming before you properly, asking for permission to build the, construct the driveway in advance of doing anything. The ones that are out there, I don't, again, we researched the ones that were on this block. Didn't find proper, except with one exception, didn't find proper permits. Didn't find any evidence that they ever, through the years, came before the zoning board for permission to do those. So it becomes an enforcement issue, and that's a, you know, something that would have to be discussed with the city manager or the community development director.
Technically, the city could make them tear them out.
Making those come out. Well, that would be the question. Or they would have the option to come before you and ask for them to be grant, after the fact, given permission after the fact.
That's up to the staff to do if you want to spend the time doing it, but as I said, I compliment these people on doing it correctly. Any other questions? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Come on up. I swear you in. You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Name and address.
Scott Livershire, 220 North Broadway. I'm quite familiar with the city of Joliet. I've been a landlord in Joliet. And I believe a lot of those properties over there had attached garages when the houses were constructed new. And people, whether they used permits or not, sealed them off and put garages in back. You know, I've seen it over and over again. So a lot of those drivers were probably used for their purpose and. Not for you, but some, not all of them.
They dress all your cars up here.
Not the new ones, but the old ones, and it's, Rommelville is another situation where the driveways go nowhere because the garage isn't there anymore. That's just my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion. Motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Motion to second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Mr. Lusio?
No.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Nocktree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, and we move into old, first of all, there is no old business not having a public hearing. So we move to number seven, new business requiring a public hearing. We have item A, petition 2020-06. This is a special use permit to allow expansion of an existing home daycare for up to 16 children located at 913 Plantain Drive. Is the applicant Kashima Omowabi here? Okay. The petition is, Ms. Omowabi is also the owner of the property, and this is a special use permit to allow expansion of an existing home daycare. The subject property is located in the Lakewood Prairie subdivision and is zoned R1B, single-family residential. The property is 9,100 square feet in size and includes a two-story house with an 18-by-31-foot asphalt driveway. The rear of the property is improved with a privacy fence, a deck, play equipment, and a shed. Surrounding zoning, land use, and character, all of the area surrounding the home is zoned R1B, single-family residential, and the neighborhood consists of two-story, single-family homes. Applicable regulations are as noted in the report. Under discussion, the petitioner opened a childcare business at her home in December 2017. She started with two children and increased her enrollment to eight children in December of 2018. She now seeks a special use permit to expand her enrollment for up to 16 children. The zoning ordinance provides that family childcare homes that provide care for more than eight children are special uses in the R1B, single-family residential zoning district. Group childcare homes with more than three children, including someone, a person's own children, requires a childcare license through the Illinois Department of Child and Family Services. The maximum number of children permitted in a group childcare home by the state of Illinois is 16 children. The state of Illinois requires group childcare homes with more than eight children under the age of 12 to employ an assistant. The petitioner intends to hire a full-time assistant if her special use permit is approved by the city. Her current license restricts children to the main level of the home. The petitioner has business liability insurance specifically for childcare home business. The petitioner expects to continue to meet the state's other licensing requirements, and the petitioner has provided additional information on her daycare, as this can be found in the staff packet for the petition. The child, this childcare home would continue to accept children from the age of six weeks through 12 years old. The childcare home's current licensed hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. midnight. In practice, children typically arrive after 7:00 a.m. and leave by 6:00 p.m. The petitioner intends to keep her same hours of operation. Parents would continue to park their cars in the driveway or in the street and escort their children to and from the home. City ordinance states that daycare centers are required to have not less than 75 square feet of outdoor play area per child for the total number of children using the area at any one time. This requirement means that the petitioner would need an outdoor play space of at least 1,200 square feet. The petitioner's backyard is approximately 3,280 square feet in size. City ordinance also requires that the outdoor play area be enclosed by a fence or a wall at least, of at least three feet in height. The petitioner's backyard is enclosed by a privacy fence that measures six feet in height along Ridge Road and four feet in height around the remaining three sides. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to recommend approval of this special use permit to the city council for an expansion of the daycare home up to, of the home daycare up to 16 children, the following conditions would be included. One is a standard condition that reads that the special use granted shall herein terminate and lapse unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained not later than 180 days of the effective date of the ordinance, and the erection or alteration of a building is started or the use is commenced within such period. I won't read the rest of that. That is standard condition. Item two, condition two, would read, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit. And three, that the business like, that the business shall be registered with the city clerk's office. And that concludes staff's report. I should say there was an addendum added to your dais late, before the meeting. There is one correction, I believe, to the condition number one, and that reads that the principal employee of the daycare shall be the owner of the property, and said owner shall reside in the house. And the other condition that was added, I believe, is the third condition, that the special use permit granted herein shall terminate upon the sale of the house to a new owner. And finally, number four would be, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit. That concludes staff's report.
Staff, so number two was also modified. And I just spoke with the applicant, and she informed me, which she'll make a comment about, is that the state's licensing requirement actually does take longer than 180 days, so staff would recommend that number two read that the special use granted shall hearing terminate and lapse, elapse unless a daycare license for the expanded enrollment, which is a missing word, of up to 16 children is obtained from the state of Illinois not later than a year and a half. Does that? A year and a half. Because her previous license, it took her a year to go through the state's process, so that, I would think a year and a half should be sufficient.
So we should probably put that in days. So do you have a, is there a number?
So I calculated 540 days.
Okay. We will, so noted. So do you have that correction?
Make that a condition.
Okay. Thanks, Jane.
Petitioner here? I swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law. Name and address, and speak up into the mic, please.
Kashima Omowabi, 913 Plantain Drive, Joliet, Illinois, 604.
Okay, are there any comments you'd like to make?
No.
I assume that she has all of her state credentials and everything are all in order, that we have no control over.
Correct.
Open to the board. Any questions?
I have, I guess, two questions. Is there a homeowners association where you live?
There is.
And do they have a say in whether this daycare center is there or not, and have they agreed to it?
They do have a say in that, and I have been working closely with them. So they are, they are aware that I'm coming here today. Our bylaws say that you're not supposed to have a business, you're not supposed to run a business from your home. There is an exception with a business like a home daycare. So the way it was explained to me is that they had to have some type of verbiage in there to keep people from, you know, fixing cars in the driveway or doing something that was going to become a problem. They know that I'm licensed. They know that I have general liability insurance, and so they are aware. When it comes to expansion, I wanted to make sure that I had the blessing from the HOA and from the city before moving forward with DCFS, which is the Department of Children and Family Services. I know what to do with them. I've been practicing. I'm licensed. I've got that under control. But I wanted to make sure that the community was going to embrace this. So to answer your question, they are aware. They do have something to say about it. They just want me to know that, that Joliet is okay with it, and we'll take care of that on our end.
So are they planning on giving you an official yes or no?
Yes, oh, most definitely. Most definitely.
Okay. And another, just an observation, or maybe a worry. 16 children could lead to quite a traffic mess early in the morning and late at night, it would seem to me.
I thought about that, and most parents trickle in. So you have some people that drop off at 7:00 or 7:15. You have other parents that drop off at 8:00. There's never been a time since I've been in business that everyone came at the exact, you know, within a two-minute. I have a garage, and I have a four-car driveway. There's also parking on the street. It's, you know, there, there's ample space for it not to become a problem.
Are the kids that you take care of now generally from your own neighborhood, or do they come from farther out?
There's a mixture. There's a mixture. So I have two who live within the subdivision. I have one that's probably less than a mile away, and then I have two families that come probably from about two or three miles away in a neighboring village of Plainfield. So it's a combination.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So are, do they have a special use permit right now, and those hours go to midnight, is what it says?
No, this is, this is a new.
Completely new from us?
Yes. This is, this is an expansion to allow up to 16 children.
So under this, with the current conditions, it'd be able to operate till midnight?
Correct.
Okay. Would you have any objection to limiting the hours of operation to maybe, you would have an objection?
Objection. So the reason that I chose to be licensed for that amount of time is that I wanted to be able to serve families who don't work traditional business hours. When you're talking about daycare, that's, that's a necessity. And you have people who work retail. You have people who work, you know, third shift, second shift, and most daycare centers, the commercial centers close at 6:00. If you're, if you're late, there's a dollar, a minute, late fee that's tacked on to that, and you got to get your kids and go. Now, of the family providers, we're usually a lot more lenient. And so most of us close at 6:30. Some, 7:00. And that's, you found a real gem if you have a provider that's going to stay open until 7:00 p.m., because most of us start our days early. Kids come in at 6:00, 6:30, and we have to be up and showered and have breakfast, you know, get it going before then. So that's a long day. It's a long day for us. So for me, I wanted to be able to, to, to fill a need. Am I going to, you know, work myself to the bones and have kids all day and all night? No. But if there's that family who needs, you know, care from 12:00 in the afternoon until 7:00 at night, or 8:00 at night, or maybe they need to work on a Saturday, I want to have my license to be able to help, to be able to do that. That, so yes, I would oppose if I could be heard.
The HOA, they would be giving you the similar type of, they'd have to give you the same approval to stay open till midnight, or? You're not sure about that?
I don't think that they're, I, I don't think that they really want to be involved with this. When I've spoken to them, it's, it was pretty much the bylaws say you're not supposed to run the business. We know that. We also, everything that I submitted to you guys, including the little summary of who I am and how I feel about my business, they received all of that. I've been going to, I've not missed a HOA meeting since I bought my home, so I'm a presence. They don't want to start talking because neighbors that sometimes, it's all they want to do is find something to attack. If they got a parking ticket or a fine for their garbage, and now they find someone who's having the daycare on the street, you know, blah, 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 blah. So they haven't really said a whole lot. They gave me their blessings. They told me to let them know how it goes today. They told me, thank you for doing it the right way. They, they know that I'm licensed. They know that I've been operating, and I think that, I think that I'm, they're trusting my character. They're trusting my integrity to make sure that if I'm going to operate, I'm going to do it well and operate in a way that's not going to cause a problem. I want to be successful, and so whatever that takes, that's what I'm doing.
Anyone else? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Come on forward. I swear you in. You swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, sir.
Name and address.
Matthew Schreiner, 919 Plantain Drive, Joliet. I live three doors down from her. I saw the sign out front that this zoning meeting was occurring, and I was a bit concerned just because of the amount of children that would be allowed. Next door immediately to the north of me is another home daycare. They have maybe at most six to eight people, children, at one time. Never had any issues with, with my neighbor at her home daycare. Never had any issues with her and her home daycare. It's just that that is an awful large number. I'm concerned about congestion. The blink of the hours, and understanding that now, I did not know that was the timeframe that they were looking at. It's just, you know, a concern. I understand the homeowners association has rules that against home businesses such as auto repair or the like, and the fear is that maybe you expand in this area, and then they start allowing other things to go through. I'm just, as one person on the block, concerned and, you know, hopefully everything works out for it. If they, if it gets approved, and I'm sure, you know, she's done an amazing job with the kids so far that I've seen. Any encounter I've had with her and the children in her care have been nothing but positive, but that's just an awful large number. And my other concern is, is there going to need to be expansion to the house eventually, construction-wise, because of the amount of children being, you know, allowed there?
That would have to come again before.
Yeah, I understand that, so.
And don't forget, we also have the standard escape clause in there that should have become a public nuisance. These petitions can be resented. So that's always something that you have to rely on.
I do also have a question regarding, from what I understand, when my neighbor to the north of me was thinking of expanding her daycare operation, she said something about needing a second egress. Not just, for like the basement, not just the one set of stairs down there. Is that something that, I don't know the building code.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to respond to that. If you have your daycare in the basement or on the second floor, then there has to be different exits. My base, my daycare is entirely on the first floor, so that does not apply to me. I have a front door exit. I have a back door exit, and every one door in my house is on the main level, and so that, that's not applicable for me.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition or concern? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
So my only, with the addendum, number three, to just add language or upon change in ownership, it just stops at the sale of a home. When, because you can change ownership. in ownership, it just stops at the sale of a home, because you can change ownership without selling a house, you know, you just sign over your D...
Yeah, do you wanna speak on...
Yes, so I'm just telling you in terms of our discussion. So, in terms of my discussion for condition number three, I would like to add or upon change in ownership. I believe it just stops at upon the sale of the house to a new owner. So, I will be a yes, but just adding that additional condition, upon change in ownership.
Okay. Everyone get that?
And the reason from, the rationale for my explaining is that you can change ownership without selling a property, so that way that you're not locked in to only if the property is sold.
I seem to have a lawyer on the board. Are we all set? A motion would be in order with those conditions as stated.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second. Call the board.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Lusio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye. Thank you, good luck.
And that matter will be scheduled, be in touch with staff for the city council meeting, and... Oh, I'm sorry, that's, I stand corrected, on daycares, they do stop with the zoning board, so that is a final approval. Moving on to the next case, this is petition twenty-twenty dash zero-nine. Is the applicant Midwest Capital Investments Two Scott Librischer available? Yep, I'm gonna summarize the staff report. This is the property at eight-thirty-three and eight-thirty-five North Broadway. The request is a variation of use and a series of variations to allow continuation of a two-unit at eight-thirty-five and a single-family residence in an R-three, one- and two-family zoning district. The applicant is requesting this variation of use and series of variations to allow continuation of the two-unit at eight-thirty-five and a single-family residence at eight-thirty-three North Broadway in an R-three, one- and two-family zoning district. The variation of use request must be considered by the city council following the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. Requested variations from the zoning board of appeals include a variation to allow two main buildings on one lot, a variation to reduce the front yard setback from thirty feet to twenty-three point five-four feet at eight-thirty-three North Broadway, a variation to reduce the side yard setback from eight feet to one-point-nine-six feet at eight-thirty-three North Broadway, a variation to reduce the side yard setback from eight feet to two-point-two-two feet, eight-thirty-five North Broadway, a variation to reduce the rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to eighteen-point-nine-nine feet at eight-thirty-five North Broadway, and a variation to reduce the minimum required lot area per family from thirty-five-hundred square feet to twenty-two-hundred square feet. Section forty-seven dash seventeen point twenty-two, non-conformities of the, of subsection three, non-conforming structures of the zoning ordinance, allows pre-existing non-conformities to remain as long as the structures are not enlarged or altered in a way that increases their non-conformity. Under site-specific information, the property in question is approximately sixty-six-hundred square feet in size. The property includes a circa nineteen-twenty-five two-unit, and that's eight-thirty-five North Broadway, and a circa eighteen-seventy-five two-story, single-family home at eight-thirty-three North Broadway. The two-unit at eight-thirty-five North Broadway has been a two-unit since the nineteen-thirties. The property has an asphalt parking area off the alley and includes five off-street parking spaces, and that meets the city's parking requirements for three units. Surrounding zoning, land use and character, to the north, R-three, one- and two-family residential, and that's a residential use. To the south is R-two, single-family residential, and that's also residential. To the east is B-three, general business, but that's undeveloped, that's a ravine, and to the west is R-two, single-family residential, and that's actually a neighborhood park. Applicable regulations are as noted in the staff report. Section forty-seven dash seventeen point two-eight, variation of use, is defined to mean a relief from the strict compliance with the use limitations of the zoning ordinance regarding the classification, regulation, and restriction of the location where trades, industries, businesses, and residences may exist. Under discussion, the petitioner slash property owner maintains that they purchased the property in nineteen-eighty-seven with a two-unit residence and a single-family home. The property owner discovered that they did not have the proper zoning for a three-unit, nor for two buildings on one lot, in October of twenty-nineteen, when Neighborhood Services inspected the buildings as part of the recertification process through the city's rental inspection program. The two-unit at eight-thirty-five North Broadway has been in the rental inspection program since nineteen-ninety-two, and the single-family home at eight-thirty-three North Broadway since nineteen, since twenty-seventeen. The plans, floor plans for the three units located on the property were included with the petition, as well as a recent plat of survey. The ground-floor unit at eight-thirty-five North Broadway has eight-hundred square feet of living space and two bedrooms. The basement-level unit at eight-thirty-five North Broadway has five-hundred-sixty square feet of living space and two bedrooms. The two-story, single-family house at eight-thirty-three has three bedrooms and approximately fifteen-hundred square feet of living space. Staff from Division of Neighborhood Services inspected the property on Monday, February third, twenty-twenty. Their inspection identified code violations at both buildings that will need to be abated in order to bring the units into compliance with the International Property Maintenance Code. Subject to these modifications, Neighborhood Services has no concerns with the property continuing on as a three-unit. As a three-unit property, this property will be subject to the rental inspection program. The petition also includes the above-noted six variation requests, which, if permitted, would allow the continuation of the existing non-conformities in an R-three, one- and two-family residential zoning district. The zoning ordinance requires five off-street parking spaces for three housing units. The property has off-street parking for five cars, which meets the zoning requirements. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to recommend approval of this variation of use request and a series of variations for a three-unit in an, in an R-three, one- and two-family residential zoning district, the following conditions would be included. One, that a minimum of five off-street parking spaces remain in the future. Two, that the rear asphalt parking lot and all internal sidewalks on the property shall be maintained. Three, that the use of the property shall not be expanded in the future. Four, that separate water service, external shut-off valve and meter, a water service, external shut-off valve and meter be established and/or maintained at a minimum for each building. Five, the property owner shall participate in the Joliet landlord slash tenant screening program. Six, the property owner shall comply with the city's rental inspection program. And seven, should either building on the property be declared a public nuisance by the city council, the variation of use is automatically revoked. And that concludes staff's report.
Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Name and address.
Dan Condon, and eight-eight-seven-five East Teal Lane, Wilmington. We would just like to continue our rental business on that property. It's been basically three units there since nineteen-thirties, and we'd just like to keep renting it out.
Okay, any questions by the board?
I have one. Was eight-thirty-three occupied in February?
Yes, it was.
And the inspector found that the heat wasn't working?
Correct. We, we were in the process of getting rid of that tenant. They actually had their gas meter removed because they kept getting it shut off and self restoring it, so we're in the process of working with NICOR to get that meter put back in and get it all fired up. While that was happening, we did go ahead and install an electric water heater so that he did have adequate hot water.
But you're gonna get rid of him?
Yeah, it's, it's now vacant. We got his back like, I think, last week or the week before.
Any other questions?
Is there a separate sewer line to each one of the houses?
That, I'm not sure of.
Could we put that as part of it, that you separate the sewer too, or make sure that there's a separate line so that if one gets plugged, you're not plugging the whole property?
We can look into that, yeah, I'm not, I don't know how it's set up over there, where the sewer goes out, if it goes out to Broadway or if it goes out to the alley, but we can look into it.
Does the city know if that's been looked at?
We do not, we'd have to look into that.
They haven't had one we have anymore.
It goes out the...
That was a smell.
It's probably about a hundred years old.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was, it was done in the thirties, so it's hard to say. It's probably clay.
Probably have to dig up the whole yard.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience?
Scott Librischer again. I believe, you know, the other house was built in eighteen-seventy-five, which is a hundred-and-forty-five years old, so my assumption would be it had its own sewer line, you know, and then...
It's almost as old as I now, isn't it?
Well, I don't think so. But we've never had any sewer problems there. We're hands-on with all of our properties, we do full maintenance, but we can look into that. I, I would be willing that it has two separate lines, they were built at two separate times, about fifty years apart.
You wanna come forward? I swear you in, do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Name and address.
Dante Ferguson, I'm the resident.
Into the mic, sir, please.
Dante...
Lift it up, that's okay.
Dante Ferguson, eight-thirty-five North Broadway Street, apartment number one.
Okay.
Yes, I live in the lower apartment, that, which is the basement apartment. I was just, I'm just here to see exactly what variation of use will be to my, my address, and how exactly will it affect my apartment. Is there gonna be any reconstruction?
Well, that would be between you and the landlord.
Yeah.
This board would have nothing to say about that, so...
Yeah, I'm, that's what I'm just here for, I'm just...
We'll have to discuss that with the landlord at a later time.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have a lease?
And, and, yeah, I have a lease.
Okay, fine.
I'm the resident. Yes, the backyard, I don't have a vehicle, so using the backyard isn't really a concern for me. What do, what do they want to do with that is their business.
Okay.
If they wanna expand it or lower it, that's up to them, but I don't have a vehicle, so it doesn't exactly affect me.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to see exactly how it would affect my apartment. Does, is, is my, is my apartment gonna need any reconstruction if they're going to expand it or lower it? That's, that's the only thing I was...
If I may, Mr. Chair? Just, just to explain what, the variation of use is just to simply, it's a zoning, they're asking for a zoning approval to bring the property into compliance with the, the regulations. They're really not, it's to allow continuation of what's there today. Now, there may be through the rental inspection program and the interior inspections that take place frequently, routinely, as part of that program, there could be changes, you know, updates, things that, for safety and so forth that need to be done. That's not something we are here today to deal with, but it's just, the variation of use is to allow what's there to remain. Three, three homes, three dwellings, residences on, on the property.
Yes, I'm, well, I have nothing to do with eight-thirty-three, so I have nothing to do with that whatsoever. I'm only concerned with my domicile.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Chair closes petition, the floor asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
We have motion second to approve the petition, call the board.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Lusio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the next item on your agenda, petition number twenty-twenty dash ten, this is, the applicant is Joliet Investment Partners LLC. Is there a representative available? The location is three-oh-five South Larkin Avenue, and the request is to, for an extension of a previously granted special use permit. Under additional information in the staff report, an amendment to an existing special use permit that allowed an indoor climate-controlled storage facility to add exterior mini warehouses within the existing parking lot was approved by the city council at their meeting on August twentieth of twenty-nineteen, and as a condition of approval, construction was to have begun within one-hundred-and-eighty days, which would have been February sixteenth of twenty-twenty. A letter is attached by the petitioner explaining that the delay in the start of the process was created by unforeseen circumstances regarding preparation for construction of the site. Work is now expected to start within ninety days. If approved, the extension would allow a new construction start date of August twentieth, twenty-twenty. Planning staff is in favor of this request. The zoning board of appeals makes the final decision on the extension request. The original staff report and supporting plans are attached heretofore, and under conditions, the same conditions would be included, and I'll go through these. One, that no outdoor storage shall be allowed. Two, that a landscaping plan shall be submitted as part of the future building permit and approved by staff. Three, that the proposed brick wall can be constructed of face brick or similar material, approved by staff as part of the future building permit. Four, that the amendment to the special use granted shall herein terminate and lapse unless a building permit or C of O, certificate of occupancy, is obtained not later than one-hundred-and-eighty days of the effective date of the ordinance, and the erection or alteration of a building is started or the use is commenced within such period. The rest of number four is a standard language. And number five, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of the special use permit, and that concludes staff's report.
Petitioner here. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Nate Washburn with Kavanaugh Gormley Gorbold, I'm here on behalf of Mike Hanson, one-eleven North Ottawa Street in Joliet. We're just here to ask, as staff pointed out, an extension. Since the previous grant, we ran into some issues that we couldn't foresee. However, civil engineering was submitted to the city last week, and my understanding is the building, the landscape plan and the building designs have been submitted and should have arrived either today or tomorrow to the city for review, so the plan would be to get underway as soon as we get through those processes and have this thing done sometime within the next six months.
Do you have any more problems with the church on the parking, or anything?
That I don't know, that I don't know.
You don't know, huh? Okay, I remember the last time. Any questions by the board? Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Chair closes petition, asks the floor for discussion and a vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve the petition, call the board.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Stafford?
Aye.
Mr. Lusio?
Aye.
Mr. McCauley?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, the next item on your agenda is petition number twenty-twenty dash eleven. The applicant slash owner of the property is Michael E. Kelly, is the applicant here?
Son of a...
Son of a, okay, okay. The location is eleven-oh-one Catherine Street, and this is a request for a variation to reduce a required side yard setback from six feet to one-point-six feet in order to rebuild a two-car attached garage. As per the applicable zoning ordinance, section forty-seven dash six-point, forty-seven dash six-point-four, or point-six dash four, the required side yard setback for a structure in an R-two zoning district is to be six feet. I think it says one-point-six, but six feet. The zoning board of appeals makes the final decision for the variation request. Under site-specific information, the irregular-shaped sixty-by-one-hundred-and-thirty-two-and-a-half-foot through lot currently contains a single-family structure with a two-car attached garage that was recently damaged by a fire. According to the Will County Assessor's information, the house was built in nineteen-twenty-nine. The city's zoning ordinance was approved in nineteen-sixty-eight, establishing a new setback requirements and making the existing structure non-conforming. The property is Zoned R-two, single-family residential, and this case was filed January seventeenth of twenty-twenty. Surrounding zoning, land use and character, the property in question is surrounded by other single-family properties that all contain R-two, single-family zoning. Applicable regulations are as noted in the report. Under discussion, the approval of the requested variation will allow the petitioner to reconstruct a two-car garage that is attached to the house by a covered breezeway, and there is an attached plan in the packet. The subject garage recently was damaged due to a fire. In order to rebuild the garage at the current non-conforming setback, a variation is required. The petitioner would like to utilize the existing foundation for the garage and replicate the old garage that was damaged in, in look and material. Conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve the amendment to the special use permit, the following conditions would be included. Actually, that's a typo, it should say if the zoning board desires to approve the, the variation, I think that's from a previous report. The following conditions would be included. One, that the recon... One, that the reconstructed garage resemble the old garage in design and material. And that concludes staff's report.
Petitioner here. I swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law.
I do.
Name and address.
It's right, 14907 South Bartlett.
Any comments you'd like to make, sir?
We've given update to the photos. They did get a contractor right away. It was a car fire in the garage, and so if you drive by today, the garage is gone. Just a slide. We're looking forward to getting it rebuilt.
Any questions by the board?
Just one. I guess the objective here is to put the garage back exactly the way it was before the fire.
Save the slab.
Do the neighbors have a problem with this at all?
They, I talked to Mike. He's out of town, and he hasn't heard anything from them.
I mean, it's been that way for a long time.
We've owned it for 27 years, I believe.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Chair closes petition, asks the board for discussion and a motion.
I move we approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Call the board.
Mr. Riggs.
Aye.
Ms. Safford.
Aye.
Mr. Lusio.
Aye.
Mr. McCauley.
Aye.
Mr. Noctree.
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy.
Aye. Thank you.
Chair, the next item on your agenda, petition number 2020-12. The applicant is Adrian Roman Oliveros and Maria Luisa Santander Martinez. Are the applicants or representatives available? Yes. The owner of the property is also the same party. Location is 339 South Reed Street, and this is a request for a variation of use and a series of variations to allow the continuation of two single-family homes on one parcel located at 339 South Reed Street. The variation of use request must be considered by the city council following the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. Requested variations from the zoning board of appeals include a variation to allow two main buildings on one lot, a variation to reduce the front yard setback from 30 feet to 24.6 feet for the main house, a variation to reduce the side yard setback from 20 feet to 12.3 feet for the main house, a variation to reduce the front yard setback on a corner lot from 20 feet to 0.7 feet for the rear house, a variation to reduce the side yard setback from 6 feet to .9 feet for the rear house, a variation to reduce the rear yard setback for a garage from 3 feet to 1 feet for the garage on Lot 229, and a variation to reduce the minimum required lot area per family from 7,500 square feet to 52,40 square feet with the lots combined. Section 47-17.22, nonconformities, subsection three, nonconforming structures of the zoning ordinance, allows pre-existing nonconformities to remain so long as the structures are not enlarged or altered in a way that increases their nonconformity. Under site-specific information, the property in question consists of two lots and combined is 10,480 square feet in size. The property includes a larger circa 1930 one-story home and a smaller circa 1922 one-story home on the corner lot. The property also includes a garage on the second lot. A paved driveway leads from Reed Street to the garage. As a condition of approval, staff recommends combining these lots and establishing a Fisk Street address for the smaller house. Surrounding zoning, land use and character are R2, single-family residential, and the neighborhood consists of one and two and a half, I'm sorry, one and a half-story, single-family homes. Applicable regulations are as noted in the report, as well as a definition for a variation of use. Under discussion, the city was made aware that this property did not have proper zoning for two homes on one lot or a two-unit. In June of 2018, when Neighborhood Services investigated a complaint at the property, the tenant had notified Neighborhood Services to several maintenance issues that were being neglected by the previous owner. Prior to that time, Neighborhood Services was not aware of the use of a second home on this lot, and therefore, the property has not been on the rental inspection program. The previous owner did not attempt to correct the property's zoning and instead decided to sell the property. The property sold to a new owner in January 2020, and the new property owner slash petitioner filed this petition to allow for continuation of a two-unit at this location, as well as to allow for the continuation of two single-family homes on one lot. This petition also includes the above-noted variation requests, which, if permitted, would allow the continuation of existing nonconformities in an R2, single-family residential zoning district. The zoning ordinance requires four off-street parking spaces for two single-family homes. The property has off-street parking for more than four cars, which meets the zoning requirements. The floor plans for the two homes were included with the petition, as well as a recent plat of survey. The larger house has 936 square feet of living space and has two bedrooms and one bath. The smaller house has 432 square feet of living space and has one bedroom and one bath. Staff from the Division of Neighborhood Services inspected the property in January 2020. Their inspection found that the property owner slash petitioner will have to abate maintenance-related code violations at both homes to bring the units into compliance with the International Property Maintenance Code. Subject to these modifications, Neighborhood Services has no concerns with this property continuing as a two-unit. If the variation of use is approved, this two-unit property will be subject to the rental inspection program. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to recommend approval of this variation of use request, and a series of variations to allow the continuation of two single-family homes on one parcel, the following conditions would be included. One, that at a minimum, should say four, and that's been corrected. Yeah, I'm going to read from the addendum because there are some corrections to the conditions. So if you have that sheet. Condition one reads that a minimum of four off-street parking spaces shall remain in the future. Two, that the asphalt driveway and all internal sidewalks on the property shall be maintained. Three, that use of the property shall not be expanded in the future. Four, that separate water service, a separate water service, external shut-off valve and meter be established and/or maintained at a minimum for each building. Five, that the rear house shall establish the Fisk address of 1143 Fisk Avenue within 60 days of ordinance approval. Six, that two tax parcels shall be combined into one tax parcel within six months of ordinance approval. Seven, the property owner shall participate in the Joliet landlord/tenant screening program. Eight, the property owner shall comply with the city's rental inspection program. And nine, should the property be declared a public nuisance by the city council, the variation of use is automatically revoked. And that concludes staff's report.
I swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law.
Yes.
Names and addresses.
Michael Korst, 2720 Cave Farm Road, Joliet.
Adrian Roman, 6th Independence Avenue.
Have you seen these recommendations prior?
We have, and we have no problem.
Any problems with those?
Beg your pardon?
Do you have any problems with those?
Not at all. Mr. Roman's fully prepared to move forward and correct all the maintenance violations. He just purchased this, as staff noted, a month ago. More than ready and prepared to correct all those maintenance violations and comply with all the conditions that are set forth in the staff report.
Any other comments you'd like to make?
Unless you have any questions.
Questions by the board?
Are the properties occupied now?
No.
Okay. That's good, because there's no heat.
He needs to correct that. He needs to correct the water and some other things. He's more than ready to do that as long as we get approval. Ready to move forward.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience? No? Okay.
How about O'Con?
Yeah. He doesn't get to vote only every other meeting.
Oh, okay.
This is his odd meeting out.